All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight is the regular school board meeting of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District thirteen of Tuesday, October fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you call the roll, please?
Palmer.
Here.
Flaherty Dell.
Here.
Larkin.
Here.
Landmark.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Thank you. Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash your potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Core values in this district: community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next on our agenda this evening is our agenda approval adjustments, announcements, correspondence. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Missy, second by Laura, any discussion on the agenda this evening? Hearing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that's it. Thank you. Announcements, October twentieth, Monday, six P.M. is a levy community forum here in the district center. October twenty-first, Tuesday, five P.M. is a school board listening session here in the family center foyer, actually out there in the family center foyer. October twenty-first, Tuesday, six P.M., school board work session in the community room. October twenty-seventh, Monday, seven thirty P.M., levy community forum at Heights Church. October twenty-eighth, Tuesday, seven P.M. is a regular school board meeting here in the community room. November fourth, of course, is the general election. November eighteenth, Tuesday, five P.M. is a school board listening session, family center. November eighteenth, Tuesday, six P.M., school board work session, community room. November eighteenth, Tuesday, seven P.M., regular school board meeting here in the community room. Superintendent Kelly, do we have any correspondents this evening?
Mister Chair members, there's no correspondents at this time.
All right, thank you. Next on our agenda is communication to the board. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. Board will listen to brief remarks as clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. However, the board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Looking out at the audience, and we have presenters in the audience, and it doesn't look like we have any communication, informal communication to the board. So, we shall move on to our consent agenda, which consists of minutes of the September ninth and twenty-third school board meetings, personnel report, lane changes, and the treasurer's report for August of two thousand and fourteen. Do I have a motion, move that forward, please?
I'll move that forward.
Second. Motion by Laura, second by John, any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then motion is carried. Thank you very much. Discussion reports and information items is next on our agenda, and first, we'll have some reports from members of the board, where board members can report on board activities since the last regular scheduled meeting of the board. And, um, would you like to go first, Missy?
I can go first.
Thank you.
Um, this week I attended the Booster's Hall of Fame dinner before the homecoming game, which was really nice and very well-attended, thank you very much for that. They had two alumni that were inducted into the Hall of Fame from nineteen-eighties. I don't even remember exactly the year. That was a very nice dinner and a good turnout. Went to the homecoming football game, and yay, they won, go Heights! And had a, they had a spectacular fireworks display after, so the kids really enjoyed that, and so did the community. So I thank everyone for that. It was a lot of fun. And one thing I wanted to report, and I had a really, that I wanted to share with the board especially, I had a very nice conversation. If you get an opportunity, I'd really like you guys to talk to him. He is our, one of our seniors here that we featured, Louis Karchi. He went to Princeton this, this last summer for seven weeks. And he sat down with me this week and talked about his experience. And if you don't feel what Heights is about after you've met with this young man, you just don't know. Because he spoke, spoke about where he came from and how coming from, you know, poverty and a single-parent home and, and the, the challenges that he had, had gone through. But, but because of this, this district, he has really, is reaching for some stars and some goals that he's, he's looking to attain. He is, at this point, put together four essays to do an early acknowledgement to Princeton, and already three of them have been accepted without having to go back and redo. One he has, too, his personal essay has, has been really noted as being something quite identifying. And one of them was about the diversity in Columbia Heights and where he's come from. He, for some reason, he goes, "I, I wrote about soccer." And then he said, "Well, but I really wrote about the diversity and, and the things that, where I'm going and where I want to go." And I said, "Where, where do you really want to go?" And he goes, "I really want to go to Princeton." And he said, "I'm gonna go to Princeton." And I said, "That's awesome," you know? So he named three other schools that he's, he's aiming for, Georgetown, Harvard, and Yale. He's going into law, he's looking at law, and, but at the same time, he said, "I really want to give back." So, what in, has come full circle for him is because of his experience, he is seeking out, in the community, young students that he can mentor to have the same experiences he's had. I mean, it, it was such a heartwarming and just a wonderful conversation. So if you guys get an opportunity, take five minutes and talk to this young man, 'cause he is amazing, and he will be. What we are going to at the end of October is a gala for an alumni, alumni of distinction. And I do believe that Louis will be there one day, because he is an incredible student. And I, I am very, very proud of him and very proud to say he's my friend. So, thank you for taking the time, and if anybody would like to talk to him, let me know, and I'll have him contact you. So, that's all I have.
That's quite a bit, thank you. Nice, nice story. Laura?
Oh, that's gonna be really hard to follow that up, that's amazing, that's wonderful. Good, I'm really glad to hear that. And I will definitely take you up on that opportunity, so.
Yeah.
Um, well, I attended a nine-sixteen board meeting, can you hear me okay? Okay. I attended a nine-sixteen board meeting, and I actually would want to inform the board also that I might be late to the next school board meeting, because I have another meeting scheduled on the same day, but it will be at six, six P.M., and it's a fairly important meeting that I need to attend. So, I'm hoping to get that, for some particular agenda items, moved to the front of the meeting so that I can make it here on time. But I, I do want to apologize for that ahead of time, I'm fairly certain I'll be late. Well, anyway, we got a presentation on the digital learning that they're doing over at the nine-sixteen area centers, and they were talking about basically bringing the personal learning devices into, into the district and some of the positive impact that it's had. One of the things, they, they did give us a presentation by a number of students that were talking about how awesome it was to attend. And one of the things that they said was the wonderful thing is, "I, I'm never losing my homework when I have this device." It's not in a packet, so I don't lose the sheet, and I, I, it's always right where I need it to be, and how they're integrating it so that they could work from, from one device, and then if they need to, you know, like a tablet, but then if they need to do some typing, they can actually move all of their personal stuff to another device without having to, to, to re-log, basically re-log into the system. That they were working on the compatibility so that they can use various devices and make sure that everything is accessible from those devices. So I thought that was very cool, and I know we're already doing things, we're talking about Schoology and things like that as well. So I thought that was a really positive thing. And, um, other than that, there was one other issue, too, that came up. Next year, or, we, we would probably have to decide at some point if Columbia Heights will be the, will go to the National School Board Association as a nine-sixteen, nine-sixteen sends two members from the districts, and next year Columbia Heights is, will, it has access to that slot. But we would actually need to inform them if Columbia Heights will be doing that. And since I'm not entirely sure who will be, I, I don't know as a board if we should take that into consideration if you want to assign somebody, or if we should just beg off this year. So that, I don't know if that needs to have formal action or not, but we probably need to make a decision probably by the next board meeting. So, that's pretty much it for me.
All right, thanks. Lori?
Um, well, I was, attended the joint session with the city council to discuss, discuss all of the questions, and everybody else that was here was, was there as well, to discuss all the levy questions that will be on the ballot in November. And then I also had conversations with, with constituents on some of the levy questions as well, so, that's it.
All right, thanks. Ted?
Uh, yes, I was there, too, and I hope everybody got some good information from that forum, because we talked about a lot of different issues, and I did have some questions that, as well. So, I would encourage everyone, I think it's televised, right, or was being recorded when we had the forum, so. Um, and then I also attended the policy subcommittee meeting before this school board meeting. And then I was at the homecoming game, and I agree with Missy, it was, it was fabulous. It's so nice to see the fireworks continue, that, I think that's been going for like, like seventeen years now. So, I, I don't know of any other district that does, has fireworks at homecomings, so. It's great, a great Heights tradition. And thank you to everybody who donated for that. And then I also have been in several WMEP meetings. We did have a four-hour WMEP board session, trying to figure out how we can best serve the member districts, how WMEP can, and what value can be added to the member districts. So, I would like to have a, place that on the agenda for some work session, because they are looking for the entire board to give some input into that as well.
Good.
And then I was at the school board candidates forum at First Lutheran, and it's just nice to be on the other side, to hear everybody. Good job for everybody.
All right, thanks. John?
Yeah, I would agree with Ted, it's a lot easier to answer the questions when you're sitting at the table
Yes.
in the back. Um, I was at that candidate forum as well. In no particular order, certainly not the correct order. Since we last met, I was able to attend a couple different football games. I attended the Minnesota State High School League Quarterly Meeting, was at the forum with the city. I was at Columbia Academy for conferences, the high school for conferences, I will make a, a comment on that. I, I, I came about the same time that I normally do, and there was, I was really pleased with the number of parents. I complained I had to wait in line for a while, but it was really nice to see, there was a lot of parents that seemed to be there last night. I don't know if there's, it was a higher number, and it was just different timing, but it was a really full house, I was happy to see that. Um, I attended the, it was a levy committee forum at North Park tonight, I showed up for that. And I think going back to the high school, to the, the homecoming game, it, I was also there, and it was fun. And I have to comment on the crowd. I thought we had an extremely enthusiastic, well-behaved crowd as well. I was very proud to be there and see that was going on, and I think a piece of that, I know that they were pretty specific at the gate as far as, you know, the kids getting in there, and they've always had some things where, Columbia Academy kids, you have to have a parent at a certain age and things like that. But I attribute to a big piece of that to just, you know, how things were handled, how people got in. But it was, it was a very active crowd, but it was a very well-behaved crowd. And with that many people there, that's not always the case. So, again, was real proud to be a part of that as well, so. And I believe, that's it.
All right, thanks, John.
Um, I also was at the policy subcommittee meeting, school board special meeting with the city, couple of football games, and also the Hall of Fame dinner. We did have an AMSD Association Met Gala in school districts meeting, and there were a couple of guys there debating, one guy named Johnson, one guy named Dayton. But the more important thing, just kidding, Governor Dayton and the, one of the other candidates, Mr. Johnson, were there to talk to the group. And I'd rather spend my time on, on something more, more important to us, and that is SLEDs, which stands for the Statewide Longitudinal Education Data System. And what does this all mean? Well, it's a database where they can do so-called analytics. They take data from everywhere on student, Minnesota public school student performance, K through twelve, and also any post-high school graduation information that they can get. And why do they do this? It's being created to assist in identifying most viable pathways for individuals in achieving successful outcomes in education and work, such as identifying predictors of long-term student success, designate targeted improvement strategies and programs, improve data-driven decision-making, and meet federal funding requirements. But one of the interesting things is we got a demonstration of some of the statistics that, that can be pulled up, and they can be sliced and diced any way. There are over a thousand variables in the database, which you can be manipulated to make any kind of report that, that you desire. And they handed us some literature, and again, it's a work, they emphasize it's a work in progress. They don't have all the data fields in there. As time goes on, they'll continue adding to it. Their plan from now until eternity, I guess, is to add to it twice per year data that they get from high school graduation, you know, public school children, postgraduate, post-high school graduate information. But, um, you know, they gave us a form, and seventy-seven percent of high school graduates go to college. This is two thousand and eleven data. What else can I tell you? Minnesota does well in moving students from high school to college, however, gaps in enrollment exist for key groups of students, including students of color and lower-income students. It's just oodles and oodles of data that if one wanted to, you could spend days and months and probably longer than that studying and being immersed in it. But it's very interesting with the goal of being able to predict what, what students are going to need for the jobs of the future, but also identify areas where maybe some programs aren't particularly working, and then figure out a remedy, and then steer that another way, and then re-measure, see what the results are, and tweak it again. So, um, I think that's it for my report.
Superintendent Kelly?
Chair Burdell and members, I attended a monthly meeting with local seven-ten president Carl Lightbody, and we congratulated each other because we had no issues to discuss, so it was just a nice, warm-friendly meeting. I attended a post-secondary early success meeting with the superintendents, in the six districts again, and the Anoka Ramsey College President. And I would just like to forecast that we have a joint agreement to continue with our early, early college initiative, and I will bring that to a work study to talk to you more about. So it's, that was a very successful meeting, and, and we were all grinning from ear to ear. Attended the academic lettering program at Columbia Heights High School, and I want to congratulate all the students that were recognized that night. There were a few more board members there, too, that evening, and it really was focused on academic success. It was very well-done by Principal Robleski and his staff, and there were a great many parents there as well, a lot of great photo ops. Attended the AMSD Executive Committee and the AMSD Board of Directors meeting, and Chair Burdell was right, we did spend a lot of time on the SLEDs data, and I think that Laura Palmer first started forecasting this a couple of years ago. It really is baked now, and they're ready to roll it out. And so we are going to use it on the ground, because if we say we're going to be career and college-ready, we are going to have two of those speakers out at the end of October for the admin after-school meeting so that we can start taking that data and looking at where our students are. And Chair Burdell asked a very good question on how they're going to keep all of this data at the meeting so that it would could not be breached. And I think they were confident, fairly confident that they could, but then, then again. So that was the question that they were working on. But I want you to know that we are taking that data and going to look at it in the district. We had a big data day, in, data day in the district as well, and it was just the admin team, and Director Burke's got us all together, and we took a look at, which we will do as quarter, for quarterly meetings now, the admin team on how our students were doing, and how we're doing on closing the achievement gap. We also did a tabletop exercise on crisis management with the death of a student, and it was, both things were very well-done. I want to thank Coordinator Rick Hammond for the tabletop, and I want to thank Director Burke's particularly for getting us all organized for the data retreat. Director Holmgren and Directors Hennigan and myself were also at the joint meeting and enjoyed presenting. And, yeah, Member Landworth's right, there were a lot of good things that went on at that meeting, and good information passed out, and I thought, I think people appreciated hearing, both from the city and from the school district on that. I attended a Northeast Metro nine-sixteen superintendent meeting focused on weather-related issues, because winter is coming, and district management council projects that are upcoming. One is still in special education, and the other one will be on academic return on investment. I went to a girls' swim meet, it was great fun, and it was warm. Don Hoyen went with me, and we actually had a time to go to dinner and then come back in and get toasty. What a fun group that they are, and I, I wanted to say that what was always nice about all of our teams is the sportsmanship. And it was parent night, and the parents had flowers, and the dads got dad's root beer. I thought that was adorable. And then they had, in addition to that, at the end, which I always enjoy about our teams, is that each team, we played Saint Anthony Collaborative, cheered the other one on at the end of the game.
Mm-hmm.
And it was just, it almost, you're just going, "Oh, what a great night." Go home in your car and think. So they just crossed over and they, and said cheers for the other, of the opposing team at the end. I, Director Hollaby and I held an achieve meeting to discuss the future program direction of the achieve program at the academy. And as Ted said, there's a great deal of discussion going on at WMEP right now. We had another WMEP superintendent meeting, and I think we have scheduled that as a discussion item for the next work study.
Okay.
Also, the Tri-Metro Governance Board met, and if you can believe it, we're in our second year now. And one year of planning, and now it's up for real, and we all agreed in the room that it was a lot easier this year attending the meeting than it was last year when we were trying to figure it out. Most people are very, very excited and happy to be with, in the new conference. And the director reported out that sportsmanship conduct and parent involvement and surveys at the events as they do them have been very high. So, that seems to be on the right track. One of the highlights of my evenings here in the district was really attending the Minnesota Business Partnership Dinner, where Valley View was feted and celebrated as the two thousand and fourteen Minnesota, Minnesota's Future School. You'll hear more about that later, but everyone was dressed to the nines, and we came in on a red carpet, and then we heard fabulous things, and I'll say it now, Principal Fort and Valley View received a standing ovation from the partnership, so it was a very, very well-done. I had a quarterly meeting with Chief of Police Scott Nidall, and we had shared ideas about where we could collaborate, and we talked about issues and concerns we might have. Also attended the pep fest at the high school for the football team, the booster dinner, and the homecoming game. Enjoyed all three, and thanks to all that were involved in, in planning it. And then just got back from a community forum on levy questions over at North Park, and Principal Sasek was there, Director Holmgren, Hennigans, and Board Member Larkin. So, thanks to all of you for doing that. And I have one thing that's probably going to cause you grave sadness. Due to the shortness of this week, there'll be no superintendent update, but I promise an even longer one next week. Thank you, I can close my report.
That's very sad.
Yes, I can see everyone is sobbing.
I actually look forward to reading it when I get home from work.
Thank you, Laura.
It's true!
We all do, Laura. All right. Thank you very much, Superintendent Kelly.
Thank you.
Um, next on our agenda this evening is Personalized Learning Initiative, Columbia Academy. And the board will be presented with information on Columbia Academy Personalized Learning Initiative. Our presenters this evening are Brian Hennigan's Director of Technology and Security Services and Amy Ochsager, Personalized Learning Initiative facilitator. Welcome.
Uh, thank you, Chair Burdell, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. So this evening, we have a brief update on how it's been going. Uh, we have, we're in our second year of the initiative, so we have a, hopefully in a second, a presentation that'll show up on the screen. It's on one screen, just not the other one, there we go. Um, and just kind of give you a brief update, as always. Start with our mission statement and focusing in on creating worlds of opportunity for every learner. And our core values, obviously with an initiative like this, we have, we hope that our Personalized Learning Initiative is creating excellence, both for our students' learning and for our teachers' teaching. With the Personalized Learning Initiative and the devices that we have, there's an increased opportunity for collaboration for our students and staff, whether it's the students in learning and, or whether it's the staff in collaborating and staff development or teaching. And we believe that with the initiative, that we have some innovation in education happening, and, and as we hear other districts doing some of the things that we're doing, and we're like, yes, we've been doing e-portfolios for a while, and, or, you know, we have our focus in formative assessment, and we started that years ago. So, it's nice to see that in some areas we're, we're forging ahead of other districts. Um, just as a review, I know we've kind of presented, you've seen this slide before, on, you know, our focus areas with the initiative. Um, you know, as is, obviously with the title of personalizing learnings, we're talking about differentiated instruction for our students. We're talking about technology, technology tools, devices for students. Um, we want things to be flexible. As always, in all of the things that we do now, we're talking about college and career readiness. Um, we talk about our twenty-first-century life skills and engaging our students in a new way. And also, with the Personalized Learning Initiative, talking about equity for all of our students, ensuring that each one has the same opportunity. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Amy, who can talk a little bit about the nuts and bolts of what's going on.
All right. I'm Amy Ochsager, I'm the Personalized Learning Initiative facilitator for the district. I'm currently at Columbia Academy in the second year of the Personalized Learning Initiative. And we're going to be updating you on change in device for the sixth graders, a little bit about how the tablet rollout is going this fall, staff development, and the future of the Personalized Learning Initiative. So, the biggest change probably this year is that while seventh graders are going to continue to use the iPad, the sixth graders are using an Android tablet, tablet, we're using the Asus Transformer. So you'll often hear me say to teachers that it isn't about the device, it's about the learning that happens on that device, or using it as a tool. Um, and as a Google Apps for Education district, using their tablet and their management system really allows us to deploy those tablets in a way that's time and cost-effective. Um, you can see in this picture that I actually had a group of students volunteer this summer to come in and help me set up tablets, and in two hours, we set up over two hundred tablets with about six students that came in. So it was pretty incredible, the amount of time that was saved doing that, and we had a lot of fun doing it as well. Finally, as we're moving forward with the Personalized Learning Initiative and planning to take it to scale in the next few years, we really want to make sure that we have all the information and experience that we need in order to make the best decision about what device we'll want to use in the future in our classrooms. So, we've started to roll out tablets already this year. Um, one huge success from last year was that we did a gradual rollout model in sixth grade. Um, we know that for sixth graders, they're new to middle school, there's a lot of changes that go on. And so we introduced the tablet slowly in order to make sure that they're really ready to use those as a tool for learning. And we felt that that was a, a huge success, and we wanted to continue that. Um, we really feel like that's why we had such a low incidence of loss or damage with our devices last year. But even though we wanted to follow that model, we also wanted to speed things up just a little bit. Uh, so this year we've accelerated that timeline. We still had the main checkpoints of the sixth graders. They started out with just the tablets in math class for a few weeks, then they started carrying them throughout the whole day, and then next week they'll have the opportunity to start taking those tablets home. Um, we just started all of those things a little bit sooner. Um, finally, on the rollout, we have a big focus on digital citizenship. In fact- In fact, before any devices are used at Columbia Academy, we had a week-long focus on digital citizenship. We call it Star Tech. And the teachers and the students in their star classes have conversations around topics like digital footprint and internet privacy, cyberbullying, those really important things to start those conversations. They can continue them throughout the school year. And one of the activities we did at the end of the week was each star class was to create a song or rap about what they learned or about digital citizenship. So we have an example here from one of our sixth grade classes.
When it comes to education, you know we have to sound, if you're major code, don't pass it around. It's dangerous to cheat the privacy with info overload, seven minutes ago, seven minutes to stop right now. Do your part and take a bow.
You can see there was some enthusiasm there to tell what they learned about with digital citizenship. One huge benefit of being in the second year of the personalized learning initiative is that we've already been through it once. So that's huge this year. At Columbia Academy, most teachers teach more than one grade level, so there's very few teachers that didn't experience tablets in their classroom at all last year. So that's been huge this year that it's not new to everyone. In addition, we have our learning management system, Schoology, and that's allowed teachers already created their digital content and their digital curriculums last year, at least started those and they're able to really easily share them, collaborate with each other and then reuse the materials or update them that they did last year. And then finally, I continue to be onsite as the personalized learning initiative facilitator to provide support and resources for the staff and the students. Turn it back over to Brian.
So, future of the initiative. As we presented before, we talked and discussed that from the beginning, our focus was looking at this initiative and growing it through the middle school, sixth, seventh and eighth grade. We had the funding to continue that, push through eighth grade, so we will do that next year. You know, whether we tweak little things here and there before next year is to be determined yet. We'll see how, how things go with seventh grade, taking them home over the weekends and, and sixth grade kind of moving through that same process. So we've released a little bit more to those seventh grade students. We'll see how successful that is for us and if we need to make any changes, but full plan is to move that personalized learning initiative into the eighth grade. Beyond that is where the funding streams that we have cannot, we can't afford to move the initiative any further than that. And just a reminder of, you know, that's why, part of why Levy Question 2 is on the ballot and focusing on that personalized learning, bringing it to scale across the district, those, creating college and career-ready students with those 21st century life skills. So that's kind of the future. So we do, we have a solid plan moving into next year. It just gets a little bit interesting, so to speak, once we go beyond that because we just don't have the funding to keep the initiative moving forward into the other grade levels. So some key messages. As always, we talk about technology and devices. We're really talking about technology as a tool. With our personalized learning initiative, it's the tool that, you know, whether it's iPads last year or Asus tablets this year, it's the tool that kind of goes along with that initiative. It's a key component, it's a key tool with the initiative. There's a lot of things that we may not be able to do as well or maybe not be able to do at all without technology involved in that initiative. And we're going to focus in true personalization. We can try to define personalization or individualized learning to a T. It's tough because every classroom is different, every subject is different and the structure's built within the school from district to district or from school to school is different. So as we move along, we're finding our way, finding our path on that. So there's always, there's always a little bit different twist to it. The role of a teacher is changing, but it's still extremely important. As you can see here in the picture, we have, you know, a teacher working with a student on his iPad one-on-one. And you can see in the background, the students or other students are doing, you know, their own thing, they're working individually at this time. So it may look a little bit different in the classroom, but that teacher still has a huge impact in that classroom. So again, you know, the device is a tool, but, you know, they're still a key component. So we want to always remind people that they're essential as we move forward with the initiative. And I think that is it for a brief update on how things are going this year and what's next? Any questions for us?
Comments, questions?
Early on, are you finding anything in particular taking place with the seventh graders, bringing them home over the weekends? You talked about looking for potential problems. Are you running anything in particular at this time?
In general, it's gone fairly well this year. I think reminding the kids that it's meant to be a tool learning at home and keeping that message strong so that they're not using it to do other things has probably been the biggest challenge that we have, reminding them that it's for schoolwork.
And the nice thing is with our devices, you know, we can set them up in a way that it tries to focus them as much as possible into what we want them to be doing with the device. But obviously, we want the device to be flexible too, so we have to have some openness with it too. So yes, the weekends do create an additional challenge, but I think, like Amy said, overall, it's been very, very positive.
Yeah. Ted.
Yeah, I know many, many districts are going to personalized learning initiative and it's, I think the key is flexibility. I'm glad you're focusing on that because not only is it flexibility from student to student, but teacher to teacher and, you know, so that's the beauty of technology.
Yep.
Thanks.
Yeah, actually I do have a comment too. I see that we're using the Google Docs for education as well. That was actually part of the personal learning initiative that they were, they were doing over at 916 as well. And they said that it's extremely, extremely versatile. Now, I do understand a student could actually pull up their profile at home on their own device as well, like a home computer and stuff, and have access to different assignments and all sorts of other stuff. You've done an absolutely wonderful job on rolling this out in really highly organized fashion and it's been, it's made it, it's made it very comforting, you know, because it's, it's an expensive initiative. And I'm, I'm very glad to see all the hard work that you put into the thought going forward of, you know, making sure that the parents are involved with the responsibilities and the students really value the tool that they've been given. You've just really done a wonderful job with that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Amy's our organizer, for sure.
Amy, can you add something that reminds the kids to turn their stuff in?
Man, Schoology tells them and that's just about the best we can do.
It needs to vibrate or make an alarm sound or something. Work on that one, Will.
Sort of joking. I have a quick question for Brian. Was the choice this year for the Android system purposeful in that, you know, did you want to try the Android system and compare and contrast to the iOS system and get some history? Is that?
Yeah, it was, it was, we spent a lot of time working on the decision whether we're going to look at an Android tablet, what Android tablet we were going to look at. Yes, comparing it directly with iPad, not just the device itself, but the apps. I think, as Amy said, it's important to know what else is out there. It's important to focus in on what are we doing and what is the device doing for us? You know, we want to be fiscally responsible, we want to make sure that we're getting the best bang for our buck when we're purchasing things. So it's, it's important to be informed and after we were for this year, we felt like that was the best device for us as we moved forward. And, you know, like Ted said, word flexibility again, I mean, it's, it's important that we're flexible as we move forward. If we want this, you know, we want this to be a long-term initiative and we want to make sure that we're flexible through that.
Yeah. Well, thank you. I mean, it's highly likely both platforms will be with us for, you know, decades to come, so.
Yes.
You know, probably have to work with both of them. Yeah, Ted.
Just one follow-up is, are we collecting data to, to see the impact of the personalized learning initiative? Are we able to do that on student achievement?
There's a lot of data that we're collecting, so, I mean, I think for the most part, it's no different than the, than what we've been collecting, whether, you know, it be assessment data. You know, we do, we do have our walkthroughs that administration does to look at engagement and look at some of those other things that we can't get rid of in an assessment. We're going to continue to do our surveys that we do both students, we do students, teachers and parents to try to gather information, again, to show success and to show what kind of positive impact we're having on the learning.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's critical to show the evidence of, of this is, this really make an impact.
Yep.
All right. Nice job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda, we have our Director of Human Resources, Lindsay Bennett, and she'll present the board with information on the employee handbook for this year.
Chair Bardell, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. In your board packet was the employee handbook for 2014, 2015. We're a little behind this year, but we'll get it out to staff. There was very minimal changes over last school year. A lot of it is just staff updates. We had retirements, additions to our staffing. We also updated the policies, so if they changed through the last year, they're updated in the handbook if they are, as part of the appendix. And probably the big change is just we added more information on the health and safety training. We switched systems this year, gave a little more directive as to who has to complete it every school year. So the next step is, is we, and it was reviewed by our attorney, so the next step is we'll get it out to staff, we have them sign off that they read through it and then we wait and we redo it again next year. So I just, if you have any questions, let me know.
Any questions, comments right now? All right. Thank you, Lindsay.
Thanks.
All right. Next on our agenda is the building vision card, Valley View Elementary, and the board will be presenting on information on the vision card for Valley View Elementary. This evening we have Dwayne Burkus, teaching learning, Mr. Willie Ford, our principal, and Tara Tuckrell with us this evening. Welcome.
Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. My pleasure to be able to introduce Principal Fort and now Coordinator Tuckrell of Curriculum, but former Dean of Valley View Elementary. Since, this is our first vision card of the school year. Normally we've been coming to you in the second semester with these. I think it makes good sense for us to come a little bit earlier to be able to share with you our achievement data that we have from this year's MCAs. And Valley View being V or maybe furthest down 49th or usually the last one on the list and they get to be first tonight and I think that's only appropriate once in a while, but I just have to echo what Superintendent Kelly said. I think one of the highlights of, certainly of the last at least five years, I think of my time is being at the ceremony for Valley View in honor of Valley View at the Minnesota Business Partnership and seeing the standing ovation for Principal Fort. In typical fashion though, and I think this is, just kind of sums up Principal Fort in some ways, all of a sudden, somehow he had managed to take the spotlight out of, off of him up on stage with a thousand people looking at him. This bright light, like it was coming from the heavens, came down right over our table and all of a sudden, instead of everybody looking at Principal Fort, it was, we were all on, under, under the light. So, and I think that's his way. He, he, he talks about his staff, he talks about the support, he honors those around him. And I think it's one of the reasons, and I know that when people have asked me, you have three elementaries, very similar in demographics, are they very different in what they do? Not so much. We do a lot of the things very, very similarly and we've got great teachers in all three, we've got great principals and deans in all three, but this really is an exceptional pair sitting next to me here. They've done great work in leading that school. All of us are learning from them. One of the big things we're doing this year is, is sharing out, having them share out what has worked and making sure that because we're all one team here, that all schools know what's happened there and can learn from it, sharing in each direction. Every school has great things going on, but this has been a wonderful experience and I, so thank you for letting me come here and introduce him. Sorry to go a little long there, Principal Fort. It's all yours.
Thank you for your comments, Dwayne, and good evening, Board Chair Bardell, Board Director, Superintendent Kelly. I will be presenting the 2014-2015 Valley View Vision Card. You can see our mission statement, Columbia Heights Public Schools' mission statement. The seven core values that Chair Bardell mentioned earlier. Our current enrollment as of last Thursday was 542 students and we're getting, getting students every day coming in, which is good. Our demographics, 37% Hispanic, 34% Black, 21% White, 7% Asian, 1% American Indian at Valley View. Enrollment by special population, 86.3% is our free and reduced lunch percentage, 9.6% of our students are special ed, 39% are English learners. Our academic data, MCA data, same score as last year for math. Math, we were at 71%. Reading, we went up four points and science, we went down eight points last spring. Columbia Heights Public Schools' strategic roadmap includes mission statement, vision 2015, core values and strategic directions. If it's okay, I would like to only comment on those ratings that we have, that are three or less. I will pause a few seconds so you can take a look at all the information. The first one there, A5. As a district, we have been unable to quantify the 21st century learning in our classes, so we did not rate ourselves on goal number A5. Okay, number A11 and A12, we left that blank because previously we've used Encore data. Encore allowed us to offer some classes that we don't currently offer this year, so we B1 is math, map, math, growth, our scores. And B2 is reading. We don't map, the last map results were given in May. We don't typically do real well in map. We, we put a heavy focus on MCA data, which is prior to that. So we, our scores actually went down, our map scores went down in math and reading last year.
Is that a function of the exam, you think?
I think it's some of a lot of different variables. It's, it's given in May and we started testing last March 31st. Well, actually we started in February, we had access testing in February. We started with the MCAs in March, all the way through April. It's a lot of testing. We do science testing right in May as well. I think there's some test stamina issues potentially with the kids and how much testing that we have them do. And again, we really rev ourselves up for the MCA data. We figured, we really kind of think that's the, the one we're measured on. Map gives us some important information and we have not, for the years I've been there, we've not done extremely well in, in that particular assessment. We've done actually better in the MCA.
Yeah, I know the timeline's been mentioned before, but thanks for the reminder that, you know, the map test argument in May after, literally after all the you know, the map test argument in May, after, literally after all the other tests are gone, and I understand, you know, that test fatigue for anybody, I think.
Yeah, yep. B5, we are 47% in reading, even though we gained four points, we are ways still to get to 60%, which is level two for reading. So, we're hoping and feeling as though we're going to make some, some gains this year. We have literacy by design, new curriculum that's been instituted district-wide, and we have a heavy reading and literacy focus in our building. B7, we need a four-point jump to get back to the next level, which would be level four for the science test. Okay, B14 is behavior referrals. Still, we have a skewed percentage there. There's a 20 to 29 point percentage gap between our highest referral group of students and our lowest referral group of students. We're very cognizant of that. We're working hard to, to lower that percentage of referrals for all of our students. Okay, SMART goals. Achievement gap must be cut in half by 2017. The gap, in some cases, is 20 to 30 percentage points. Academic improvement must be accelerated by all students. The district has helped us figure out that we need a 10% decrease of the gap in each of our ethnic cells over the next three years to make our goal. So, I think what you'll see tonight, and you'll see in the other presentations, that we've agreed upon that 10% is what we need every year, all ethnicities, to get, to reach our goal by 2017. So, actually, in math, we, at Valley View, we do not have a gap. All ethnicities at Valley View have academic proficiency at or above the state averages in math. Science, our goal is 10% in every cell. Behavior, as we mentioned before, 10% decrease is, and we think, a very attainable goal. This is a overview. We, we're going to show you a slide of each of those bullet points in just a second, but that's an overview of what you're going to see in the next couple minutes. Focus on literacy. As mentioned, literacy by design, third through fifth grade, new curriculum. Actually, we have a big professional development tomorrow for those third through fifth grade teachers. We frequently reference the priority standards as well as Common Core for the academic work that we do. Another big P, oh, at the lower right-hand column, you'll see some, some of the life skills that we focus on. These are the skills that are included in teachers' plans and activities that will help us accomplish our academic objectives. So, you'll see some of those life skills for each of the core academic subjects. Focus on math. Actually, the OPA, OLPA test, we are starting with reading on next Monday. Practice test, first time for us, online, and then right after that, we will do math for the first time, and some of our students, we do a second math practice test, and some, it's, it's not necessary. What also, we do some flexible grouping in our fourth and fifth grade classrooms in math. Have had, experienced pretty good success using those strategies. The teachers use a pre-test for every unit, and then the kids are grouped based on how they scored, and then they may, may have a different teacher at fourth or fifth grade based on that, that unit, and how well that, the children did on that particular skill or concept. Science co-teaching, third through fifth grade teachers co-teach with the science specialists, using various co-teaching models. Most of the, the models are parallel teaching, one-to-one teaching, team teaching, and station teaching, and our teachers basically either parallel teach, for the most part, in science, parallel teach, or team teach. Avid is, we use some Avid strategies in our science classes. The kids are doing some writing in the classes. They're taking notes on, based on the lecture, part of what the teacher is, is explaining. They use two and three column notes to do that. This promotes their organizational skills, which Avid is big on, so we feel as though the kids are obviously learning some science content, and at the same time, they're doing some hands-on activities that help promote their learning. Avid, all of our third through fifth grade teachers are trained now in Avid. You can see the different things that are involved, note-taking in math, science, reading classes. Mentioned the two and three column note-taking. Just the other day, one of the teachers in one of the middle school classes was talking about Cornell notes, so they, they are already, they, of course, they have binders in the, in the middle school as well, so they are anxious and excited about the possibility of having Avid in the middle school. The top right, you'll see a, a barometer of basically the returns of the teachers, not, not teachers, of the parents. The, the binders go home every night, the, the parents have to sign it, and that is the percentage of, in one of the classes, of the, of the returned binders that are signed. Excellent strategy for Avid, and we like it because of the parent involvement component, that they are in tune on a regular basis about what their child's doing in class. They can ask questions, they can write down questions if they, if they need to, about the, the content or what's being covered, or about how, how well their child's doing in class, and that's on a nightly basis. So, we, we, we like that for a number of reasons. We are actually looking at Avid school-wide. We have our second graders as well doing the binders and planners, so even though it's not officially at third grade, we want to get the kids started early, thinking about college and promoting organizational skills and, and some of the other good things that Avid promotes. So, over the last two months, we have had a series of positive press in the media. Since August 26, there was an article in the Star Tribune, and you can see that article, and this was the one that I helped, I think, helped promote the visit by a, a Star Tribune writer, and that, that you'll see very shortly, but we were number two in this particular ranking in math, and we were number four in reading. On August 29, we were in, there was an article written by Jill Nathan of the Center for School Change about Valley View. They, they referenced some of the same information that you just saw then, very positive article. On September 21, it was a Sunday, this article was in the paper, just talked about, and they interviewed a number of our teachers, and took pictures in classrooms, very positive article. It was exciting day, fun day. On September 4, that group of individuals from the Minnesota Business Partnership came. We were notified previously about that we were going to be the 2014 Minnesota's Future Award winner, which again is very exciting. We had a school assembly where they presented us that huge check that you see there, and it was a whole four or five hours of interviews and visits to classrooms, and very positive, very positive day for our, our school and our school district. And this was October 7, at the annual dinner, was, was shown.
We're here at Valley View today, and there was a common theme of community, of commitment, of accountability.
We have high expectations for all of our students. If you think and feel as though this child can learn and will learn if we do the appropriate things, those children will uphold to the expectations you have for them.
Every child sets themselves a goal, and it's called our hopes and dreams.
My son, at the beginning of the year last year in kindergarten, decided that his hope and dream is that he wanted to learn how to read, and the day that he came home and he read, he was so proud. He said, "Mommy, I think I might cry. I'm so happy."
It's critical that we have the young people today prepared to take over as employees and leaders in our organizations, and to be responsible citizens to make this state a better state than it already is.
We model everything, even pushing in your chair, picking up your pencil the correct way. It's simple things.
Our kids do a really great job of meeting those high standards, and then we're able to move on academically.
Our teachers talk to us about how we have to be role models for the younger kids because they always look up to us.
The district put in place, and they give us the freedom to be able to make selections of staff members. I always have other teachers involved. I may have as many as half a dozen teachers in an interview.
So, when I'm in a classroom and I might have a roster of 20 students or 25 students, those are not my only students. Valley View students are my students, and that's how everyone else approaches it as well.
The teachers have common planning time every day to support each other. They formulate individual learning plans for each and every student in math, reading, writing, science, and the support is geared to that child at that particular level. We're very data-driven. There are academic data. We look at attendance data. We look at behavior data. We do look at the students as individual students and trying to address each and every child's specific needs. We are addressing the achievement gap without talking about ethnicities.
It's embarrassing that we have the achievement gap that we have. We can turn that tide.
It's not that kids can't achieve. It's not that schools can't perform. It's that those opportunities need to be in place for that to happen, so that's what we're doing, I think, is working really hard to provide those opportunities.
And the kids really, really want to achieve. They want to learn. If you raise the bar, they will try to attain that and reach it.
You are our future. So, we're here today to congratulate and thank you guys. We are donating $20,000 to your school so that you can learn and teach.
Thank you. There, I think there's one more slide. Okay. Well, anyways, there was one that showed our, this one, the last slide just shows our new, our new construction on the addition, our kids from the assembly, and, you know, enjoying the, the day, September 4. That's what we have.
It's fantastic. Comments, questions for the team from Valley View?
Well, I just, I'll step up first and say congratulations. You truly, truly make this district proud. I watched the video, and I also watched your speech, and I did see the big beam of light. And I, I can't be more proud, and I know that Superintendent Kelly did hear from MSBA too, and congratulating you, and it was brought to the entire state board, what happened at Valley View, and, and so I'm very proud to, to, to be in your presence and, and really happy for the things that are happening over at Valley View. It's amazing.
Thank you so much, and it's, it's a team effort, Ms. Tuckrell, and Director Burkas, Superintendent Kelly, and our amazing staff, and I've always said that since I've been here. I walked into a pretty good situation, and, and things are, are good, and we're trying to make them better.
Also very good leadership. Awesome. I'm going to leave it there. Thank you. Awesome.
Thank you.
I want to say, if you want to see that video again, it's on our district website, right on the front page, so very proud.
Thank you. Thank you.
It was a great presentation, and of course, we're all very proud of you and your team, so congratulations with that. I also want to say, thanks for playing that song that'll be stuck in my head now the rest of the day. Other than that, it was fantastic.
You know, we actually played it last spring as a way of getting motivated for MCAs. Was it the day, the day, first day of, or the day?
Day before.
Day before. We usually get pepped up and hyped up for MCAs, so as I said, when we talk about map, we're kind of on the downswing for that, but we get hyped up for MCAs, and that was the song that was played, and I had the idea, you know, we're going to get some money, and let's briefly celebrate, using the same song.
Whatever works. Yeah, Tim.
I just also want to say, I think the idea of, of using that money to, to help higher high, high school students, to help tutor, is brilliant. Thank you so much for coming up with that and involving all of our students, you know, in learning.
Well, thank you. That was the, these two people right here with, because we thought we might be asked about what we're going to do with the money, so we kind of prepped for that, and we wanted something, to present something that might be a lasting, longer term than, you know, just $20,000, that we might get some, maybe sponsorship, or some involvement from some of the businesses, because they like the concept of, of teenagers working and having their first work experience and being role models, and we wanted to tie it in with our kids looking up to successful students, scholars, and so we thought about all of those things and, and decided to, to do this, rather than maybe, you know, the first inclination with some, I'm not kind of some materialistic things, but laptops and iPads and those, those types of learning tools, but we thought this might be a, be maybe more meaningful and, and hopefully a longer-term impact.
I was just going to say as well that Principal Ford and, and the entire staff down there has been, if not overrun, at least, there's been a high interest in people visiting and touring and seeing what the magic is. We're trying to share that within as the internals, but also with other folks as well, and I believe that there will be, beginning next month, tours on selected days at the end of the month, so that if people really want to see what's going on at Valley View, they can contact the school directly. And the business partnership, not only have they been generous in giving us the big check, they gave us the little check too. Willie let me hold it at the dinner. It was quite exciting, and then he took it right back. And then IBM is the collaborative partner that will be with, supporting the school for the rest of the year, and we don't know what that exactly entails yet, but I'm sure that knowing Valley View, that they will maximize everything, and then, and I'm going to tell a little story on Tara Tuckrell right now, because we were sitting at the dinner with, right in the front. It was, it was very nice, and to our right was the governor at a table, and beyond that was Amy Klobuchar, and then to our left was the Target Corporation, and they were talking about the billion dollars that they were going to give to education, and Ms. Tuckrell, at the end of the activities, got up and introduced herself to the power broker who was actually in charge of all the money, and said, "You know, we haven't seen you very often over here at Valley View Elementary, and we'd like to get re-engaged." And she got her card in. I think we're off and running in that as well, so in addition to the Minnesota Business Partnership and IBM, I think we'll probably be talking to Target as well. Really well done on all three of these staff members parts and on the staff in the buildings, and I'd also like to thank the parents for engaging in their students' learning, and I'd especially like to thank the students for doing so well and focused on student achievement and academic rigor. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Now we'll move on to our action items this evening. Our first action item this evening is assurance of compliance with state and federal law prohibiting discrimination. And we'll, the board will be asked to approve the assurance of compliance with state and federal law prohibiting discrimination. We have Dwayne Burkas, Lindsey Bennett, and Nicole Hallaby.
Thank you. Director Bardell, Chair Bardell and Directors, and Superintendent Kelly. I promise Mrs. Williams, she's going to get in big trouble because I think the last three meetings she's had me follow the most spectacular presentations. It's starting to become a theme. Thank you.
I wasn't going to bring it up.
Thank you for having us, and thank you. I just, I saw a tear in the eye of Director Palmer, and I shared as well of joy for the wonderful things that are going on in this district. Every year, federal government and the state government ask us to assure with the superintendent and with the board, working with Director Bennett and Director Burkas, that employees and students in our school district are following all the rules and regulations and laws for the prevention of discrimination, both with our employees and our students and families. So every year, we very carefully go over to ensure that all the programs are in place that need to be there, and we sign the assurances with superintendent and the board's signatures.
All right. Do I have a motion to move this forward?
I'll move it forward.
Second.
Motion by Missy, second by Ted. Discussion. We do this every year. Hearing none, all's in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. And that motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda this evening is the annual report on staff development, and that is Dwayne Burkas.
Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. We, Xena Stenvik, our staff development coordinator, and I presented to you as an information item, the summary of our staff development report for the 2013-14 school year. That was prior to some of the data being available that is there now. I won't go through all of the report. It ends up being close to 100 pages once you print everything out. You do have a summary of some of it in front of you, but I think the high points or the highlights of it, I will again summarize for you here and include the data that was missing. I don't have all of the full presentation from last time because we gave lots of background information as well. But this would be our, this is our summary then of the report that we will be putting forward. And again, in the attempt then to create worlds of opportunities for every learner, staff development is key, and that is what, all part of striving for excellence in our district. So in the 13-14 school year, again, as a review of what we talked about, we had an overarching focus on increasing reading proficiency, math proficiency, and our positive learning environments. With that, we have PD areas of focus in our different buildings on a variety of different things. That included a large portion of time for, in the summer especially, towards Avid, as you heard, now with all of Valley View, third through fifth grade teachers being trained, high school as well, doing lots of work in the summer with Avid, but throughout the school year as well. Ongoing work in equity, project-based learning at North Park in particular, 21st century learning in all of our schools, professional learning communities in all of our schools, personalized learning, especially at the Columbia Academy, but lots of forms of that in terms of flipped or moodle schoolage going on in all of our buildings now. And then, of course, key always is effective instructional strategies in literacy and math. So our goals in the previous year were then to increase math proficiency by continued work in key areas such as cognitively guided instruction, technology integration, effective reading strategy, teaching strategies, and the collaborative work that goes into creating common formative assessments that measure incremental growth. In reading, it was again to implement effective literacy strategies, and again, there's a lot of staff development that goes into that in our district, prioritizing English language arts standards, that is a job that we do on an ongoing basis as well, and continuing the alignment of curriculum to the new standards. Finally, to achieve, to close that achievement gap, we will have to work on other things as well, such as family involvement, responsive classroom developmental designs. Both of those are our classroom management programs that we use in our elementaries and middle school, equity, technology integration, and Avid strategies. So this information then was not available the last time we presented to you. So what impact does that have on us? And there will be more data coming for us in the work session. We will go through a thorough review of our data. But just from a district perspective, we had a 1% gain in proficiency in MCA math district-wide, a 3% gain in proficiency in MCA reading district-wide, and then a 66% of students making medium to high growth in math district-wide, and 69% of students who made medium to high growth in reading district-wide. So lots more data to share with you in the weeks to come. We're still in the process of really diving into it. As Superintendent Kelly told you, we were holding a lot of, doing a lot of work around the data that we just received at the beginning of this month. So what impact did we see? And I think with staff development, we're always looking for impact on students and impact also on what our teachers are doing. And what we did see in our work with teachers is the consistent application of the strategies, especially that we're working on in terms of different ways to collaborate, to work together, to put our heads together. Really, that's what PLCs are as well. It's just an organized way for teachers to say, rather than going it alone, we're smarter, we're better when we learn from each other. Reading and writing instructional strategies, really a consistent approach to that, especially new for us was in our secondary, that we have all teachers applying that. It's easier to do in an elementary, but we saw that also in our high school this past year. Math instructional strategies, again, that's huge for us, and personalized learning, as you heard from Director Hennigans and Amy Ochlager today. So looking ahead then, in the current year that we are in, the report that will go to MDE is really about last year, but our heads really, to be quite honest, are not in last year at all. They're in this year. And so just a real quick update then at the end here again of what we are working on. Tomorrow's a district day. It's a day where all of our teachers are back for a full day of staff development, and we'll be reiterating what we said at the beginning of the school year, that we have three goals. One is that we have all students that are on a path to college and career readiness. And we have those benchmarks laid out for us by age. The 21st century life skills that go with that, 11 of them that we've identified, includes the four Cs, it goes beyond that though, and we'll be talking with our teachers also about that. When you think of students being successful, it's not just in the academic skills, it's in those life skills as well. And then finally, as Principal Fort talked about again today, closing the achievement gap. Absolutely vital for us to continue to work on closing that gap for all students. So the key processes that we're using right now is we're working with peer reviewers and principals because of that new teacher evaluation system to help support the, when they identify areas of need, which they are, through this process, we want to be able to be flexible enough, nimble enough, maybe is the word, to say, okay, we've got lots of different teachers with lots of different needs. How do we personalize that for them as well, just like we are doing for our students? Teacher leadership teams, one of the most exciting things probably for me this school year is watching the results of having teachers who've been empowered to make decisions, to look at what's working, make recommendations, share very openly and honestly. Watching that again, as we talked about, watching North Park and Highland Teachers, grilling a teacher from Valley View on, so what did you do last year and the year before with math? Comparing notes and sharing. And as we watch that, every school having those strengths and putting them on the table and saying, here, you're a third grade teacher just like I am, take this, and giving up work and saying, and we'll work on this part, you work on that part. So we've got incredible opportunities, I think, in the, in the months ahead for us to improve through a very deliberate process of bringing teacher leaders together to develop curriculum, to make good decisions. So something new this year that we've really focused on doing and are very excited about what we're seeing. Vertical articulation teams, so that's not just at grade level or content area in one school, but across grade levels. It's going from fifth to sixth or from eighth to ninth. We have those conversations going on as well. The PLCs, the professional learning communities, and then that ongoing individual teacher support that I referred to. So those are some of the key processes that we're using. This is the format that we're really using to identify that. So we're talking about not just district priorities, but our principals have identified their school-level programming priorities. And then from that, each of our teachers now, as part of the new evaluation system, has a professional learning plan, and they're able to match that then between the district and the school. They're able to say, okay, here's something that makes sense for me in order to drive forward the goals of my school and the goals of our district. So this is again, something I think that our principals have been very pleased with. It's been one way for them to help teachers to organize their thoughts about what their priorities will be. So tonight, the report that we will be sending in again is, it's lengthy. I hope that the summary we gave to you is sufficient to give you an idea of what we've been doing and continue to strive to do, which is to get better, to have greater learning take place through more effective teaching on an annual basis. So with that, I'll stop, but I believe this is an action item tonight, so we would love to be able to submit that to MDE pending your approval.
All right. Who would like to move that forward, please?
I would. Second.
Motion by Laura, second by Lori. Any discussion?
Do we know when the report will be completed or the final version?
Well, the final version of it is complete. What you got tonight is the summary. So what was missing was the data piece because they do ask you for, so what is the impact on student learning? And now the data that I provided you tonight is that, was that final component. So I wanted to come back and make sure we had that there. The report, as far as all of the different pieces that go in, is lengthy in part because of the way that it's set up on their system. It is something I'm sure that, I mean, we have really no qualms of providing it with you. If you want to go through it, it's just a very, very thick document. The important points, I believe, are, well, they are in the presentation that I just gave you. The document that you have in front of you as well basically summarized, is another way of summarizing or saying, I think, what we just talked about here. Staff development is for us a consistent process because we have three elementary schools that largely do the same thing. We have one middle school and one high school. It's not like we have a lot of divergence. There's a lot, and if you were to come here tomorrow afternoon, for example, you would see all of our K2 teachers together in one place, all of our 3-5 teachers together in one place, all of our 6-8 teachers all together in one place, and all of our 9-12 teachers in one place. So it's a quite consistent process that we can say, okay, here are the priorities, here are the things that we're going to work on. So the pieces that you've heard from us, they slice and dice it maybe in different ways in that document, but what we're basically saying to them is, this is, as we presented here, these are the priorities, these are the things that we've worked on, here are the results. And while they weren't as strong as we want in terms of student achievement as a district, we did have pockets of some buildings doing better. And going into that data in a much deeper way is our, I believe that is in our next board session, where we'll really dig into data in terms of achievement as opposed to the staff development part of it on a building-by-building basis.
And I see where the motion is not actually to approve the report, but the plans that you presented to us, so.
Right. Well, I mean, that is the report. I mean, that's what we report to them.
As summarized.
Right, as summarized there. Yes, yeah, exactly. Yeah, thanks.
I do want, I'm so glad to see parental involvement and family involvement as part of that. Do you want to make that comment? I think that's so key.
And I think we're, and one of the things that we do hear from MDE again and again is that that needs to be a priority for us, that that is something that they're looking for as well. I do believe, in fact, it really caught my eye again with the slide that Principal Fort was put up here, where when you do it in a way that is very structured and makes sense to parents, when you saw, it works. When you saw that slide, or that slide had the barometer that he said, and it was 100% of those parents had returned the planners. That's the kind of thing that we're looking for. And so we believe some of those programs, like Avid, really encourage parents, and it gives them a real concrete way that they can see themselves being involved. So I'm sure under Director Hallaby's direction with Jane Reardon, the coordinator of family involvement, you'll see more and more work going on in that area.
And I have looked at other districts' websites, and almost all of them have a parental involvement aspect to it. So it's all over, which is, makes sense.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions or comments for Dwayne? All right. Hearing none, all's in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. That motion is carried. Thanks, Dwayne.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda, we have Matt Miller, our K-12 Activities Director. He's going to ask us and tell us a little bit about a resolution for a grant from the Minnesota State High School League.
Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, I'm here to ask for your approval of resolution on the Minnesota State High School League grant. And what this grant is about is, it really is regarding our free and reduced numbers, nine through 12. And we do this annually, and we submit our numbers to the State High School League, and they generously give back some money to our school district.
All right. Motion, move that forward, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion by Missy, second by John. I have, I'll just quickly read the resolution. It's very short. Whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation was formed to provide support for Minnesota's high school youth to participate in athletics and fine arts, whereas District 13 School Board recognizes the value of students' participation in extracurricular activities, and whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation is offering grants and funding to assist school district in recognizing, promoting, and funding extracurricular participation by high school students in athletic and fine arts programs. Therefore be it resolved that the Columbia Heights School Board supports the district's application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation for a grant to offset, form a grant to offset student activity fees. All right. Any discussion? Yeah.
So this will help make the fees more affordable for our families?
Yes. They do.
Any other discussion, questions for Mr. Miller? All right. Did you call the roll, please?
Palmer. Aye. Bardell.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Landwehr.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Resolution is passed. Thanks, Matt.
Thanks.
All right. Next on our action item agenda is repeal Policy 426, identification badges. The board will be asked to repeal Policy 426, identification badges. And we have a motion to move this forward.
It's no longer necessary.
Right. It's no longer necessary. We, the subcommittee believed, I think, that it was more of an administrative action that it didn't rise to the level of being a board policy, so.
Yeah, and having a policy regarding identification badges was kind of short-sighted as well, you know, because there's different methods of identification.
Right.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Ted, second by Lori. Yeah.
And I just want to make it clear, it's not that we're not focused on security in the district, it's that this is not that high of a level, that's more of an administrative issue.
Yeah, good point. Good point to repeat.
We're very focused on security.
We're very focused on security. We have. We have other forms of identification that are handled by the administration and the Subcommittee on Policy just, you know, this, this is better suited for administration. Yeah.
Yeah, and by repealing this policy, it allows the administration to be able to make changes as needed.
Correct. Yeah, and be flexible with what we need, so... All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you very much. Last topic on our agenda is board policies. Second reading is 416, the drug and alcohol testing policy, 504.1, the pledge of allegiance, 618, assessment of student achievement, 720 vending machines, 807, health and safety. These policies appeared on the September 23 meeting. For the first meeting, approval will be sought, and approval will be sought at tonight's meeting. Do I have a motion to move that forward?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Laura. Any discussion on this policy? Yeah, Ted?
Just had the question, all the notes on 416, are those deemed to be necessary? Seemed a lot of, the notes were instructive to, for making the policy and not so much, you know, full of content for the policy itself.
I believe that if the notes were included, that they were deemed to be necessary.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think part, part of that, and I don't remember completely, but part of that is, is since it's all statutory, those notes are explanatory of what the law is and why the policy's written this way. I believe that to be the case.
Yeah, some notes...
Yeah.
That come with these policies are designed to help the district think about the reasoning behind the policies. It seemed like there were a lot of those in there, but if we've deemed that this, these are really useful, then I'm all for it.
I'm seeing the head shaking from the HR director who probably has to use a lot of these and I think it came out of committee that way, so I would suggest we...
Yeah, I think, yeah. Good question, though. All right. Any further discussion on second reading of the policies? Hearing none, all's in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? That motion is carried. Just lively tonight.
Alumni foundation dinner coming up.
Yep.
Yes, yes.
Next week.
Yep.
Thanks for the reminder.
And that's at Jaxx again?
Jaxx Cafe. Raise money for scholarships for students. All right, well...
And they're still taking donations.
Okay, very good.
We do have another school board forum coming up, right, next week?
Monday, I think, isn't it?
Monday, yep, we do.
For the candidate forum.
Candidate forum.
Sponsored by Local 710.
On Monday.
And some more levy information sessions too, as well.
Yep. October 20th, Monday, 6:00 PM, Levy Community Forum. And October 27th, Monday, 7:30 PM, Levy Community Forum, Heights Church. October 20th, the Levy Forum will be in the district center. All right. With that, we may adjourn the meeting at 8:34.